You can't read the minutes or read the newspaper and know what's going on. If there are concerns, so I would appreciate if you would consider. And I'm happy for that for probably a year and a half. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Partika. Following our conversation last week, there may be, there's a potential, a cheaper version that we can maybe get that done.
Will you be able to go back and access all meetings?
I've actually, with your reminder, hit record on this. We have actually been recording meetings so that they can be put in for prosperity.
Would you be able to go back and see past?
Yes, sir. I think I've recorded the last three or four meetings completely. Yes.
And the minutes are on our website.
Yes, but that's his claim is that the minutes are two obtuse.
What's going on at this meeting? I'm sure it's digital.
We're working on it. Thank you very much, Gary. Moving forward, is there any other public comment? Seeing none. Have a motion to make payment of the bills or any questions of payment of the bills before that is?
Well, I'll make a motion to pay the bills until we get the discussion.
We have a motion on the table to make payment of bills. Is there support?
Support.
It's been supported by Trustee Dunkel. Further discussion?
I noticed that we have a rather significant membership dues to the MTA. And I don't know how often we use the MTA, I presume from time to time, but I wonder if there aren't levels of membership that we should consider. And I don't even know if MTA has levels.
I did not see anything that let us take different levels of membership. I mean, we could have gone higher and got unlimited education if we wanted to pay more. There was always option to pay more, Steve, but there was not an option to pay less than that.
Well, there's always an option to pay less, as opposed to we could say nothing, but we drop our membership and go from there. But I know that they used to have a free legal day. I don't think they do that anymore. They used to have several other layers of educational things, which I'm sure that they still do. But it just seemed like roughly $6,000 for membership or same amount.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to comment that, I mean, I think it's, MTA is underutilized by us here because if we do have a legal question or a zoning, I mean, any kind of a question, they have a legal team. We can email and get information back from them. So there's a ton of information on their site and I just.
Their policy procedure manual we used, that was a great resource.
Right. So there's a lot of resources. And we do, I mean, when we need to, I mean, maybe we should even start sending them an email versus even contacting our own attorney if we can at least get a baseline of an answer of what the law is about whatever question.
Yeah, they have a nice blog. Probably all get emails. And so some of those things are very relevant, but I just was a little bit surprised. We need the membership. Is it based upon population or something like that? I think it is.
I don't, I don't know actually what their formula is.
I think it's based on taxable values.
Is that TV?
Yeah, yeah, that's what it's based on.
So.
Also looking at the rest of the future.
Most definitely. Any further discussion about payment of the bills? Seeing none. Roll call vote this time.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of June 29th, 2020, is there a motion to approve the minutes presented?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of June 29th. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Dunkel, do you have an aye or no?
Aye.
Copy that. Oppose the same. Moving forward, minutes approved. To correspondence, we have yet again, Mr. Partika, a first letter of the Thunder Bay Hydroelectric Project. And we also have the minutes and the County Road Commission Report, both of which from the County Road Commission. Do we have a motion to file, receive and file correspondence as presented?
Agreed.
We have a motion. Do we have support? Support by Ellery Summers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving and file correspondence as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, oppose the same. Motion passed. Moving forward to old business, fire committee. This is a pumper engine recommendation. At this point in time, Chief, would you like to address the board?
Yeah. I can make it short and sweet for you. I gave everybody a very, very basic, Chief, as a board, to show the parallels for the bids we received. The first thing I want to do is let the board know, I was pretty pleased with the response we got from various dealers, the attention. It was a very big RFP, to say the least, the way it was written. There was a lot of rhythm in there and I know that I appreciate everything all the dealers did to accommodate us. I just wanted to put out there. After the committee meeting the other night, there was a lot of discussion that came out of it, but the bottom line is the recommendation from the Department coming out of the fire committee meeting is to go with the bid from R and R for this Smeal Spartan Custom Cap,
Clerk Plavich, would you have anything to add, being a member of the fire committee? Or Trustee Lappin?
I would say that the fire committee spent a lot of time, especially Tim, and I think Ken and Bruce, you guys and the chief went through these quotes, analyzed them, compared them. They did their homework. They got bombarded by questions from someone who doesn't really know anything about fire engines, but I know a lot now. I'm very educated in it. And I feel very confident that this is a good recommendation.
Trustee Lappin, I know that you were not present at the last one.
So the only thing, the only question I have is the Smeal custom is the two-door as opposed to four-door?
The customs generally are the four-door.
Oh, okay.
The difference in construction of the trucks, just to refresh you, is anything listed as commercial.
Yes.
Those cabs and chassis come down the line. If you have 10 trucks, they can be 10 different. One can be a garbage truck, one might be a freight hauler, one will be, you know, something else, whereas the custom caps that we receive from the dealers are built, are spec-ed out and built specifically for fire lighting.
And so.
Yeah, and to add that, from my point of view, because that was one question that we all kind of had per the last meeting that you attended, Trustee Lappin, was is there a cost savings in a two-door custom versus a four-door custom? We actually had, I believe, was it Wendy?
Wendy.
Show up. And she is, she is, and I'll open it up if they have any comments. But she came and presented over the potentials, the cost savings, even though it was a potential of maybe going out for a second RFP. The initial discussions with Chief and Wendy were that there isn't a significant cost savings.
To go to two?
To go to two-door. So that's how we kind of entered back into our last fire committee meeting. And looking at the reality, and then there's also another item of business that will be later in the agenda. We looked at the financial capabilities of the three years remaining of the fire equipment millage at .65, with three years remaining, we're looking at a potential of $669,000. So that offset and that remaining balance of, I think it ended up right around 218 with this option, afforded us the potential of looking at yet again, another RFP that will be going out and meeting all the parameters of why we originally looked at that millage. So I, again, I also applaud special Mr. Muggie for being here today as well. Your time and efforts through this process were very meaningful for members of the fire committee. Yes, Trustee Polley.
They're calling this a, is this a, I don't know much about fire trucks, is this what I mean by just a good old standard fire truck that's got hoses and tanks and all that?
So easiest way, option six is what he's, we're discussing currently. This would be not, and I hate to use the term a sister ship, but this is a very close comparison to our current engine two that is housed at Southside. That would be replacing engine one that is currently housed here at Northside.
It's engine two, the new one.
Engine two is the newer one. Yep. Four-door, very similar, not identical, but very similar within our budgetary restraints and still affording us the options to look further down the road. Yes, Mr. Plavich.
I just want to know that when the RFP went out, it was to not exceed 565,000 and we're coming in with an engine at 450,000. So frugal friend is very happy.
At this point in time, we do have several of the individuals that presented RFPs. If you have any comments over the decision that has potentially been brought to this board, if you'd like to state your name and the company and what you represent, I will give you some time to recognize the board.
That's Al from R and R Fire Truck Repair.
Okay, Al, if you would like to address the board.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks. I don't have, just want to let you know I was here to say thanks. And I don't have any further questions or concerns unless the board does.
Are there any questions for R and R? Seeing none.
We determined that, if we make this decision that we, this will take about a year and a half.
Well, and that was shortened, Chief?
It would have been about a year, Mr. Lappin, and Al had, probably last time we spoke, I believe this cycle that they have been shortened by, I think approximately 30 to 60, you know, but yeah, it'll probably, you know, 10 to 12 months.
Does that impact any of the financing?
So, yeah, and actually Michelle kind of broke that out at our last committee meeting. So with, they anticipated we'll have probably one year's of money recouped from that equipment village at .65, putting us right in the ballpark of $223,000 to put towards this payment, which at our initials, we're still going to have to, some things are, business items are still going to have to come back to the board. The financing that we were shown at the fire committee was at 2.65%.
2.68.
2.68%. So we're looking at a potential interest charge of roughly $6,100 with the remaining balance.
Yeah, we can just count the remaining balance because we will be collecting one year's taxes that we will have set aside, putting every down payment that will cover up the profit. So if we don't get it till mid next year, as soon as we collect taxes in the winter, we'll be able to pay off probably in six to eight months. So we won't even have a full year's interest.
Excellent. So that being said, Al, and with the chief, I would implore for our upcoming meeting to get us all proper contacts so that we can fully investigate the financing parameters and utilize those potential means. We can also explore local opportunities, although I would hesitate, given the financial considerations and the time delays that we faced utilizing a local lender and increase, I tend to, having gone through that process once, there's companies that work daily with municipalities and lending in regards to fire apparatus. I think it would be a boost as a board to look at those as primary considerations. Thank you very much, Al. Is there anybody else on the call that would like to address the board? Hearing none. We have, so Chief, to clarify, it is a recommendation of both your, the fire department and the fire committee, the option six, the Smeal custom with the Cummins L9 with the water wrist pump, water capacity of 1,000 gallons at the total of $450,904 is the recommendation. At this point in time, outside of the particulars of the financing scenarios, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the recommendation brought forward by the fire committee.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Lappin to move forward with the recommendation. Is there support?
I'll support. Go ahead, Cash.
I'll support.
Support by Trustee Kroll. Further discussion? Trustee Polley.
Yes, this is, we are making a motion to purchase this vehicle.
We are going by the recommendation of the, to move forward this way. We cannot make complete motion to, because we don't have the particulars as to financing. So that will be at a subsequent meeting, but this is at least a sound direction as to.
Can you just stand down there?
There is a young lady in that office there.
Oh.
Sorry about that. So yes, that is because we're now going to have to look at financing, but we at least made a decision based upon all the RFPs that were presented.
So what is our motion to move forward with obtaining financing?
We, yeah, I would say to work with R and R as to financing options to procure option six, which is the custom Smeal. Yes, Treasurer.
I know we're not talking about the specifics of financing at this exact moment, but I would just feel better as the treasurer of this township to do our due diligence, to reach out to local financing institutions and just see what the comparison is. That's just my opinion.
You have, you have my 110% blessing to do so.
Well, I just feel like, yes, the first time we did, you know, and it was a learning curve with the ambulance, but, and going through the process once, but I just feel that we should do that and I don't think it's going to be as difficult as it was the last time, just because it was the first time we did it. So, and I'll be happy to assist with that.
Okay, wonderful. Are there any other, Mr. Muggie, as a member of the fire committee, do you have any comments for the board?
On that this time, I really don't have anything else.
Okay. Well, and again, thank you very much for your time.
I too would like to take the opportunity publicly to say thank you to the fire committee and the people representing the fire department. I thought as a group, I thought that we communicated well. I thought that process was smooth, as Michelle had mentioned, the fire trucks, the equipment into the world that you guys understand, you know what you needed. We knew what we had to deal with financially and we came together as a committee to accommodate one another and to ultimately come through with something that will fit the need of the township hopefully for many, many years to come. So I appreciate all of the help in helping us to get through these learning curves.
Most definitely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Okay, can you please read the motion?
It's the recommendation of the fire department, fire committee to move forward to work with R and R to procure option six and with working with regards to financing.
Purchase this with regards to financing.
Okay.
So we're agreeing to purchase this, all depending on the financing.
That would be the last.
Exploring local options.
Well, at that point in time, to that end.
So whoever made that motion would have to.
Yes.
Steve would have to.
Steve, would you be to a friendly amendment to also procure local options?
To explore.
And then Cash Kroll, being the supporter of the motion, would you also be amendable to a friendly?
Yep.
Change. Any other clarification or discussion as to moving forward? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Trustee Dunkel. Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to new business, we have a second item recommendation from the fire committee, which is an art, the ability to send out an RFP for a tanker conversion. Some of the lessons that we learned in the first round of our obtuse and benign RFP for a engine was that we needed to be extremely specific so that we can actually compare apples to apples. That was one of the hurdles for the committee members was looking at numbers and not having a comparable. So what is presented to every trustee is, Chief had actually drafted out a potential RFP so that we can put this out. For, as I stated, with our commitment to be financially sound and looking at the needs of the department, we'd like to, with the remaining funds of the equipment millage, investigate the potential for a tanker or tanker conversion. So what is before you is all the finite language of all the little tidbits and particulars of equipment that would be needed for said conversion. As I stated, we're actually sitting pretty well, looking at what is to be the remaining collections of that five-year millage. And we'd still be well under budget potentially even utilizing this conversion. This would be a conversion to hopefully potentially use the, I call it lovingly, the Navy SEAL, the green hand-me-down from Uncle Sam that is currently housed at M32 West Fire Station that we had procured from Rose Lake MDNR through that program. And at this moment, we can get into discussion, but I would entertain a motion to move forward with producing an RFP. And I'd have to see what we did, we have submissions by August 6th, 2:00 PM, clerk's office, that gives ample time to see potentially some information to the fire committee and before our first meeting in August. But I would entertain a motion to move forward with moving the RFP for a tanker conversion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Treasurer Ellery Summers. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Trustee Kroll. Further discussion? Yes, Trustee Polley.
So what we're doing with this, the green truck as I call it, we have a present truck that we're going to remove whatever's off that and put it on this green chassis.
And I can, if you want, we kind of debated this. So we have some potentials, but one of the considerations that was brought up in fire committee is that if we remove that piece of equipment from the lineup, we are at the mercy of our mutual aid agreements for having a tanker. So one of the options that I believe, Chief, at this point in time, if you want to kind of expound upon that?
Yeah, one of the options I briefly touched on, that, of course, the RFP for the tanker conversion was, as the supervisor said, if we were to swap out, the discussion started with taking the stainless steel tank from our current water tender and putting it on a new chassis, which was originally the whole reason we accepted the freight liner from the DRML program from the DNR. There were some problems with size and accommodation. However, we, I believe they can be overcome. Another option that's been presented is, you know, surely ours is not the only stainless steel tank in the state of Michigan. The inference I'm making is that the probability that there's either another 2,000 or 2,500 gallon stainless steel tank out there somewhere that could be procured, that tank could be mounted on modified chassis, freight liner that we currently own, and converted into use for the department without taking, our tanks are out of service while that's being done. I think we're looking at about 120 gate double dial roughly for something like this. And we did discover through talking with some various different dealers that, I, and again, this is open for discussion, I put project not to exceed 110,000, given we've done so well in the perimeter of the engine. You know, if anybody's comfortable going a little bit beyond that, it's still within our means to accomplish that task. I'd be happy to do that, but, but yeah, that was one of the options, Norm, was to be able to put another stainless steel tank on our current, on the chassis we have out of DNR and, you know, and it would be, it'd be about 500 more gallons. Also would be, I want to, what we do right now is use a portable pump to fill, we refer to as a portable pump, to fill that tanker. It's powered by its own engine. One of the things we can do to upgrade slightly is slightly larger pump, maybe 600 to 800 gallons per minute or even more that would be powered off of the power, the PTO from the truck as opposed to an engine would be more efficient, a little bit faster, so.
But I guess I'm asking is, this is a cost item, if you were to replace this tanker, is that what it's called? If you were to replace this tanker, what does that cost versus doing this conversion? Round numbers?
Round numbers, yeah, I'm guessing somewhere upwards of 220,000 to 260,000, just outright by, as opposed to spending maybe around 100, a little over 100, maybe even less depending on the actions. I perused an option earlier that would give us a larger, 500 gallons more, 2,500 gallon stainless steel tank on the current chassis and still keep the costs well below $100,000.
So is this something that is normally type of thing that's done?
It is. When I went to pick up the chassis from Rose Lake, they like to keep a lot, so to speak, of the trucks they send out. What they do is they ask the departments to take before and after photos. So, yeah, there are lots of departments out there our size in our situation that have used these chassis. They either put steel or what we refer to as a poly tank, which would be a hard plastic tank on the chassis and then use them as a water tender. There's lots of them out there. And also one, just to maybe to preclude the question we might have, is one of the, one of the things I specified on that was to have a third-party EOP inspection, just to truly, to truly make sure that the water tender would meet the state's NFP requirements for being done where there's a water tender. That would be done by a third party, not by the dealer or.
I'd like to see the different options come to the fire committee for them to explore new versus this renovation and so that they can look at, yes, there's going to be difference in prices, but we're still dealing with something that's old, but that's a decision that the fire committee can look at, decide versus the savings and where you're going, right?
Right, and just to repressure that is, memory, the chassis we did pick up from the DNR, year-wise, I do, I believe it's a 2008 freight liner, but when they picked But when they picked it up from the military, the chassis only has slightly under 12,000 miles on it. And it's coming to be so clear. In my world, I did, the engine's barely broken. You know, there certainly may be some underlying things that tend to from certain, you know, in the yard. Or my thinking is these are made to run, they want to run. So I agree with them. That would be very interesting to see what this RFP can generate, some of the options we have.
Yes.
So have we had big green checked out to make sure it is mechanically sound and?
Independently, no, because the department has it, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if that's something we should be doing.
As far as it being EOT roadworthy as it is, yes. The state doesn't care about that. But we're talking about converting it to a fire apparatus and that's one of the reasons I specify that, independent EOT.
Yes, trustee.
That's 2008 out there? The green, the green truck?
I'm hearing, so.
Oh, dude, that's out of the way.
Yeah, we all did.
It looks old.
It looks old.
Yeah, yeah, it's a new old build.
Did you say it's at the DNR station or is it here?
We have moved it to the DNR station for store. So we can.
Can't see my smile, but they're. I know, I'd say.
I like the idea of comparisons, you know, of like Norm suggested, getting new compared to the conversion and just so we know.
Well, and we can, we can move forward.
There would be another.
At the exact same time. I mean, we can move forward with an RFP and then have, and task the chief to procure some, some, some costs. Because otherwise, it would be, we could do, we could expand the RFP to say not only conversion, but what would the cost of, would these particulars be for new?
Maybe two RFPs, RFP one, this, RFP two, new.
Yeah, but with the same parameters.
Yes, yes.
So did we have, we had the motion on, didn't we?
Yes, we did have a motion by Treasurer Ellery Summers.
So Laura, would you be?
There's one other comment. We haven't been very successful in purchasing too much used equipment without spending some extra money on it. I just, that's my thoughts of, over the years, I've heard these numbers come up. So I think looking at a new one, that should be some consideration.
No harm, no power, I think. Why not look at what the potentials are? And if we, that goes through the committee and the determination is made that this is a sound recommendation, then we've done our due diligence. So Laura, you are the motion maker. Would you be amenable to a friendly correction to your motion to also send out a second for a new tanker to meet the exact same qualifications and needs that are presented in this RFP?
We have to be the same due dates and everything.
Yep, everything will be the same. Will this be one, option A will be retrofit, option B is new. To, who made the support?
Cash.
Are you friendly to that?
I absolutely agree.
Okay. Any other conversation, discussion about this?
Chief suggested that we amend the RFP to include a number higher than 110. Personally, we're not in favor of that. I think it'd be awful, the opportunity to spend more, they'll spend more.
So that kind of coincides with the motion because we've been, we've been pretty objective about comparing apples to apples. And I'm reasonably sure no one on this agree with me out there. If we're limiting it to 110, that concludes, that concludes any new tanker. It's that.
But the second RFP, the second RFP, I don't think we would have to say not to exceed. I would think that.
There is, there is a possibility. I certainly, I think that, you know, when this gets out and they understand what's under, there may be somebody that said, well, if you're looking for a brand-new chassis, because you, you know, you're sure, they may be able to find one, we've been, they are tanking. And number that they're remount. But still, in that, that would require our tanker to be out of service.
Just rough numbers. I mean, I know we looked at, you know, after the pumper would be purchased, that we'd have approximately 218,000 remaining. Could we, I mean, I don't even know if it's realistic to say a new one, not to exceed 200,000, or is that?
I think you just leave it. You leave it open because we know what our budget is. And you're, you're spot on with.
Somebody comes back at 300,000.
With that potential, of which we had. We had engines in this first round of RFPs that even blew out the 565 that we had to remove automatically because they weren't feasible. Yeah, so we are looking at a potential relative turnaround in collection of remaining $218,000. But we also have to be cognizant of, because of the payoff of the ambulances, roughly $20,000 still in there. So we are, but as it goes with fire services, everything's got a time expiration stamp. Thus far, we've been extremely successful with two new ambulances, SCBA's. And now we're looking to move forward with a primary fighter engine. So I think just leaving it completely out for that option B of a new would afford us the ability to really disseminate and go from there. So any other discussion? If not, we have friendly amendments to the motion to move forward with two concurrent RFPs, one for retrofit, one for new. Seeing no further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And again, Chief, Tim, Captain Piper, everybody that came in and kind of helped us move forward with everything. I commend you all. So moving forward to the next item of new business, which is our annual letter from Ms. Ludlow at the county as to foreclosed properties that are within our municipality. In your packet is a list of foreclosed properties that we have first right of refusal. First being 3443 Lay Road, second being 2387 Hobbs Drive, third, 2259 East LaCombe Road, and last but not least, 506 South Sheridan. All four properties actually have houses on them. By denying a transfer of ownership, then these properties then go by county to, just last word, auction, through their auction process for sale. Are there any questions of the properties brought forward?
I have a comment.
Okay, well, comment?
Just, I mean, in years past, I mean, I've always asked the assessor, does this, do these properties have any value? Or, and again, I asked him the same question and they do have very little value to the township. And like we have in the past, we've sent a letter declining to the county treasurer.
So would you be willing to make a motion to send a letter to decline acquisition of said properties?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to decline the offer of the four tax-defunct properties. Is there support? Support by trustee Lappin. Further discussion? Yes, trustee Dunkel.
Not on my part.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none?
So Laura's going to send a letter.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because it doesn't behoove us as a tax-run municipality to remove a tax base from our own generation. So, roll call vote please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the last item of new business, it is a management plan for this year of 2020 from our nature preserve group. I've gone through it. They've sent this, got it on the agenda. Obviously, with COVID, a lot of things have kind of taken a backseat, but they have continued to, to move forward as a small group and making sure that the property is clear. Yes, trustee.
Is this a voluntary group?
Yes, it is.
And is this a group that stays in touch with you as far as what's going on?
Yep. I work with them quite frequently, although the past couple of months has been pretty lackluster, to say the least. But I would entertain a motion to move forward with the management plan presented as a recommendation from the nature preserve group.
Make that motion.
No support. We have a motion and support. Further discussion? Yes, Laura.
Is there any cost in this management plan to the township at all?
At this point in time, no, there is, unless there are some actionable aspects for safety and proper utilization. Looking up this year, I'm trying to procure a cost for signage. And I've also, I've already spoken with Ryan Breggy from the road commission as to implementation of proper signage on Misery Bay Road, allowing the public, because a lot of people, if you don't know where it's at, you just don't know.
But in our budget, we allocated money.
We have, yeah, there is a GL that is dedicated to the nature preserve and I believe funded at $1,000.
And we have that money still available if we.
At this point in time, that was some monies that has not been removed. So there is a potential expenditure for that GL. Any other discussion?
I was just going to hear what you said. I have walked out on those, they're really quite nice. But finding, to be a challenge. I think I parked in the right spot to take the walk.
Yeah, and last year, I personally went out with a chainsaw and laid fell quite a few trees to create a trailhead. Because it used to only be a gated two-track that was not signed at all.
Can you just explain, it's behind a cement plant, right?
Yeah, so if you go through the cement plant, that road that parallels Isaacson's Bay going through the bowels of the cement plant is Misery Bay. If you continue to move in an easterly direction, you will pass Isaacson's Bay on your right hand. After you get, you'll actually go through the intersection of North Point Shores, which is the primary drive that accesses North Point. Continuing on shortly after that intersection, and the road turns into gravel. And approximately 1.4 miles, you'll get to the intersection of King's Settlement, no, not King's, Jeez Louise.
There's nice directions right on the player.
Yeah, there is, very nice directions on the player. Well, that's the map. North Point Road. And you continue to go straight, which is heading due east. There is one residential drive on the left-hand side. Immediately following that is the trailhead parking. And so I'm looking at the potentials of utilizing proper road sign, approved road signage near the intersection of North Point Shores, saying nature preserve straight. And then just after the intersection or at the secondary intersection saying nature preserve ahead immediately to the left.
And that's the only trailhead, that's the only access point?
That is, it's primary of the 133 acres of trails. There are some smaller, not posted. I'm trying to funnel primary traffic into one to mitigate any, because there is a ton of sensitive plants on the property. So to mitigate any misuse, it's best to always try to keep it one point of ingress and egress.
Yeah, that was nice, very nice.
Yes, trustee Polley.
We have a sleeping treasurer here that's pretty nice. And I think once we get all those things in place, we can talk about it more and let the people get out there and see these wonderful things that we have. It's been kind of quiet, but if you can't find a place to park, can't get to it, makes it a little bit difficult.
Yeah, I think maybe four, four.
Yeah, that's how I, with the allowance by the man, the original management plan, which was kind of lackluster at best because you can't identify endangered or threatened species in the middle of winter. So where the original plan had people driving their vehicles all the way, the 1.1 miles from the trailhead to the lake shore.
Oh, my.
There was a proposed parking lot in the middle of that 133 acres. Because they proposed that, they did the ground studies in January. Well, you can't really identify Dwarf Lake Iris. So in that, the original, past couple of years, I've worked with this, the members of the group, the stewardship group extensively. And through vigorous walkings, we've identified that the best, most sound, least environmentally sensitive area was its original point of entry. And that's one, after that made, and I had D Hugh look at the potential sensitivity of the area, got the green light, and I started up my Husqvarna. And then we did have some associated costs by, I believe we utilized CR Yaki and some heavy equipment to pull the stumps. But there is still some gravel work that needs to be done and finalize that parking area.
It'd be nice if you could take a lot of that brush and chip it right into the.
We actually did. That was actually a cost savings this last year with our road agreement for the ditching project that took place from Misery Bay Road heading east. We actually saved $7,000 because the company that won the bid through the road commission for the ditching and the clearing, because of the sensitivity of the area, nowadays in nature preserves or conservation easement holdings, you cannot bring in a foreign substance. It has to be a true parent material. So what we actually were able to accomplish was spreading all the chipped trees that were in the ditch line, they're on the property primarily, as mulch. For, so we actually mulched from the trailhead. I would say we have at least 1,000 yards of the primary trail mulched. And that was all material. So it was a cost savings and a benefit, so worked out well. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the management plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Okay, so that concludes our new business. This is a second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, please stand, stick your name and your address.
Good morning, Secretary. Hello. This kind of goes into our discussion last, last week. When I, I'm asked to see the packet and you just might see it, but I can't see it. Without, without, well, you will discuss it with me if I make a phone call. But as a, as a citizen, I'm very interested in what, in what somebody is doing because of the work we've done on self-sides, products, and you know, looking at, at it like that. So I'm very interested in, in seeing what the, what they're, what they're doing at their, at the cruiser, just to, for my knowledge and to know what the township is doing. Also, I have no idea with this federal energy regulatory commission about, about, about the dams. And as a citizen, after reading articles in the paper about the condition of the dams, does this report have anything to do with it? I don't, I don't know those things. It's cumbersome to get the information from the township, the way it's set up.
And we've, and we've discussed it several times.
That's where I said I would like to see the course files.
Yeah, and we can get it to you. I just, as I previously told you, I will disagree with you and to send you the agenda prior to any votes by this board. So after the board's action, all of it's available. And it's always available to you. I just, I had, I had an issue with certain citizens taking advantage of getting the same information trustees had before any action actually took place on the agenda items. So that was, that's my constraint. And I think any municipality that conducts meetings in a professional manner would disallow that same request.
So what is the best way for me to get this information?
As I told you on the telephone, when you have questions, I will get you copies of anything. Because technically, that would fall under a foible request. Although this being is benign, we don't have to go through that cumbersome.
That's part of my question.
And that's, that was the response I gave you last week.
Come out on information that's, which is general in total form.
So when you have, as I spoke with you last week, Gary, and made myself extremely clear, when you have any questions about any items, I'm not going to make you spend 25 cents on a page. I will. I will get you the information that you request.
I can report, I can report.
I'm sure you could.
Thank you. So if I come out and I say.
Before you leave today, if you have questions about FERC, and as always, you have my works self. You are not shy of calling it. So when you have questions, ask.
Thank you.
Our agenda's on the website prior to our meeting.
Mr. Partika's requesting the entire packet. Yes, the agenda is, but the agenda is.
Just the agenda.
The business items. And historically, I put an end to, because I don't feel that it is a proper technique. Because as I stated to Mr. Partika, if we take the liberties to send one or two individuals board packets prior to boards conducting said business, then we have to make that available to every single citizen of the township. And at which point in time do we shudder about the cost of producing said information? So until we vote on it, it's information for this board to vote upon. And then we can disseminate appropriately. So maybe that's one potential, is we scan in the entire packet after meetings and post that with, there's corrective measures. So.
I guess, I just, again, just to comment, but would it really be that?
Laura, yes, it would be. This has, this has been addressed several times, and it will continue to be. But as always, I afford you the capability.
Here's, here's an additional point to what you're telling. And I mean, I kind of understand. But if I don't know what's, if I can't see some of this stuff before me, and I have no, I have no idea what your discussion is about, because I haven't seen, I haven't seen the documents. That's, that's my point.
Received.
So I can't make, I can't make a comment.
Mr. Scholitz, when you attend city council meetings, does city council send out their entire board packet for all dissemination?
On the website on Friday before the Monday meeting.
Okay.
I can look at every recommendation, every report from, from staff, budget, everything. I believe finance is the same way for opening a comment.
So you're seeing, I'm asking.
I, I consider.
So, and that's, that's a potential corrective action. My point was, I'm not.
But not everything is included. It is one of this drawn through before it's posted.
Exactly.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we take advantage of the $6,000 that we spend for MTA and get their opinion?
There you go. Any other public comment? Mr. Croniac, would you like to address the board one last time before?
I just wondered, has anybody else complained about, you know, the blight like I did, you know, earlier?
As to, well, you're sitting next to an individual that likes to put together lists as well. Mr. Croniac, blight is a concern throughout. Utilizing our blight ordinance is, it's always a process. I can't ever say that there's any clear way of addressing blight. We can follow our blight ordinance. But blight ordinance is also, get to a point where if the property owner themselves is not willing to go to that direction of cleaning it up, then what we've seen historically, and it will happen, not opposed to doing so. It gets to the point where, to take it to the court level, the taxpayers of Opina Township will have about $1,500 tied up to address one single blight issue. So, and I, I've always been in hopes that, well, conversations.
Should we go to the health department then?
There are certain things that actually, raw garbage is Michigan Health Department.
Is the one there, is it supposed to say you've got garbage bags from years, it's lined up?
Well, and now that I have this list, because you, we discussed this at board review.
Correct.
And then this list was taken to our building official. So this is not, I have not taken any action on this. I thought action had been taken. So afford me some time to actually go and do site visits. That's, that's all I would request.
Hopefully it's solved now, isn't it?
And I potentially hope so, without knowing them particularly.
Because actually, as I said, it's gone the other way, actually. It's just gotten more than I can handle.
Yeah, go on. I could give you a tour of our township of the best and the worst. So it's a sliding scale, unfortunately, so.
I just have a general blight question. Because it is a topic that we seem to talk about quite frequently. Do we have a blight procedure that corresponds with our ordinance? Like step one, we get the complaint. Step two, it does the, step three, step four. I mean, do we have something?
Yes, we do.
So it's almost like we can just stick it there and put it in?
Yep, it's right, it's right into BSNA.
Right into your, is a procedural process.
So.
Are there notes taken? Just for example, you go to, you know, 610?
I usually take pitchers, because a pitcher will say 1,000 words.
But then do we start a file?
And then it start, goes through, we utilize BSNA. Here's, yep, it's, it is a.
So we're documenting every step along the way?
Should, most, we have to, by legal standards.
Okay. Is that in the building program, or where is it?
Yep, it's right in the building program.
So I'll see all kinds of, you know, approval's the next one.
What's the address?
I want to make sure that your address is, and I understand. I know where you're at, Mr. Croniac.
Not at all.
Well, I understand.
Past, over the road?
Yes.
Yeah.
But you're speaking of several addresses.
Yes.
We have, and if.
There's a couple that are.
If, if, you know, to the board, I will make six additional copies of this. And I will ask everybody which out of this list is their favorite. And then we can.
Take a little white, and a white too, Mark.
Yeah. You can do it in a white vehicle. It's in your, it's in your jurisdiction. Well, Clarice will hopefully be there next year at 104 years old.
You might have stopped and had a beer. I might have one of those.
So, no, I will make copies for the rest of the board, because.
Perfect, let somebody else go, you know.
Most definitely. So I apologize on behalf of the board that nothing has been moved forward or no communication has.
I thought when I told you, I thought at one point there was, there's a cross from the, well, I guess it's a Jones crap. There used to be a bunch of equipment, you know, trucks and stuff. Well, suddenly it's all, oh, nice and all, there's some movement here.
Well, we'll investigate that more.
I would just like to say that we continue to keep an eye on these blight issues and keep looking at that. And also, I'd encourage you to go under these potholes or whatever you got in the bike tab.
Yep.
It shouldn't be taking this long, but let's get it done. So somebody doesn't get hurt.
Well, and some of the potholes are actually considering they're on private property.
No. There are a lot in the bike, I'm not talking on boards that are.
But in the driveway themselves. So.
But let's do what we can.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. And I told, and we'll work together to get some coal ash to fix it. I'll make copies of this list of blight. And I'll also recommend to our building official that on his reports that I passed out to everybody, that on that also has blight and what steps have taken in regards to that being.
If it could list location and where we're at in the process would be nice.
Yep, most definitely. So we're always willing to improve. So any other discussion by the board?
I just have a question. How, Pine Road was always a big discussion. How is that doing, Gary, Pine Road?
I love someone, someone better.
Okay.
I've talked to many, and each said there's still some stuff going on. One of the, one of the things that really looks bad is in that area. I just happened to drive by there last, last night. I know that we don't have it in our, in our ordinance, or as far as I know, we don't have it in our ordinance. But you take an area like, like that, and we really need a grass-cutting ordinance. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of moves and crap going on.
Well, that's good in theory. So we've explored those potentials. And the complexity therein, Mr. Partika, to Mr. Croniac in addressing that potential is, given the geographical disparity, we have to, when we pass ordinances, has to not only work on Pine or on Channel 1, has to work in the middle of agricultural land. So we have, we have such, we're not dis-urbanized. So when we have an ordinance, it has to work for everything. And so what may work best in your neighborhood might not work two blocks down. So it's, it's always those tough things. We have explored it. And it did not set well with a lot of individuals. So we move forward, and we move forward with the stronger blight and dangerous building ordinance out of it. But therein, we're always looking at creative ways to improve our community. So any further discussion? Yes, Trustee Polley.
Is there any comments or anything going on in reference to an update on the J.R. Henry consulting?
I can comment to J.R. Henry. All the IT firewall has all been set up. Mr. Henry, I was actually anticipating a call from him today. He is looking to start this week. It was not until Thursday or Friday of this past week that between his vacation and IT, they were able to touch base and get all of the security measures put in place. I've also informed Mr. Chief Robbins that he will be the point of contact through that process. I actually spoke with Jim Kranzlin this morning. He's per our primary audit, waiting on just a couple of small things, one from the fire department and one from you. So I don't know what it is, but there's two small things that are hinging there. And he's in hopes that we can have our primary audit done in the next couple of weeks. And Mr. Henry, I will be speaking with him today. And I will give everybody an update as to that. I also would like to mention that the budget report that's before you, it shows all the amendments that the board has already approved. And that is where we stand as of the 14th of July. So those are our numbers. Are there any other, any other discussion?
I just have a question. Are they, our primary audit, are they waiting for the fire department to do their reconciliations of the non-emergency?
I didn't, all I got was, we were still waiting on a few pieces of information from the fire department. And Michelle just touched base with Stephanie and Chelsea. We won't be working on it this week, so not a huge issue this week. So, because they don't have staff on it. So that is the text that I got today.
I mean, and I'm sure there's not like a rule or whatever about this, but when they were here doing the audit, when were they here? In May, May? You know, the fire department does their audit of the non-emergency transport.
Reconcile.
Or the reconcil, I'm sorry.
Reconciliate.
What did I say?
You said audit.
Anyway, reconciliation of them. But anyway, in May, I mean, they were still working on January. And I mean, they need to be done in a more timely manner if we're not holding up the audit.
I don't, these are all of our concerns. Henceforth, why are we having full-time officers working on an overtime rate to do bookkeeping? There's a lot of potential inefficiencies that will be explored by the work that will be commencing by Mr. Henry and his firm. So.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other discussion? As always, Gary, you have my number. Mr. Croniac, I'll be looking at some properties. I'll also get copies to the remaining board members. If there's no other conversation. This is actually, unfortunately, at this point in time, public comment has come and gone, Mr. Partika. We're at discussion for the board. I will be here after the meeting, but to move forward in a professional manner, if there's no other kind of discussion by the board of trustees, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.